Tonight's planning commission will commence at six thirty four P M. We'll call please.
Commissioner Wingler.
Present.
Commissioner Rivera.
Present.
And and chairperson Hart.
Present.
Um let's off down for the collective allegiance. Ready begin. Are there any adjustments?
Adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you. Item B public appearances be one matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction. Please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson and at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Does anybody have anything uh to bring to the commission that's not already on the agenda? Nope, okay, we'll continue to see one public hearing discussion action recommend approval. Of general plan amendment changing the land use designation from low density residential to high density residential. And zone change twenty one dash zero two from single family residential to residential apartments. For A P N zero four four dash two zero zero dash zero nine eight. And we will open up the public hearing at six thirty six.
I'm sure person I understand that commissioner bodies expected any minute. My suggestion would be that you wait until the uh she arrives before commencing the public hearing. Because it's a public hearing if she comes in after. The proceedings began, there could be some question about whether or not she should be able to participate. So I would I would say she should either be present for the entirety of the public hearing or that she not participate. Uh and so uh if she says she's going to be here at six forty as I understand it. I I I would suggest say you give her that opportunity. Go into recess, I'm sorry, will we just go to recess? Yes, I I think you can recess for a few minutes.
Okay, we'll do that.
Convening from our recess and um to our public hearing and we will continue.
Uh with the staff report for item C one.
Yep, just briefly before um you started just for the record wanna en- ensure that our notes show that uh Ms. Commissioner Bodies present.
Nurse, my public hearing is for general plan amendment and zone change twenty one dash zero two. To change the existing zone of single family residential to residential apartments. Thus amending the parcels existing density from low to medium density to high density. The project site is located on the southeast corner of Fonzie Avenue and crossroad identified as A P N zero four four. Dash two zero zero dash zero nine eight. The zone changes intention is to allow the construction of a sixty four unit affordable housing family apartment community. The project underwent ministerial review. And was deemed to qualify for the streamlined approval process. That exempts the project from the sequel review process under section two one one five nine point two three for affordable housing exemptions. This public hearing was duly noticed in the Hopeville Tribune and Collexico Chronicle on November thirtieth twenty twenty three. And public hearing notices were mailed out to property owners within three hundred feet of the project site. Staff recommends approval of resolution P C twenty twenty three tw- dash twelve. Recommending city council approval of general plan amendment changing the land use designation. From low to medium density to high density and zone change twenty one dash zero two. From single family residential to residential apartments for A P N zero four four dash two zero zero dash zero nine eight. Please note uh the draft resolution has been revised to the resolution set before you. Uh there's been a few changes, the conditions of approval have been added to the resolution. And um number three. Section E on the resolution number three has also been been re- rewarded. To eliminate the double negative. And the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions, staff is here to answer questions as well.
Thank you so much. Um would the applicant like to come forward to discuss the project a little more in detail? Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions you guys have. My name is Ray Roben with Roben LLC.
Thank you.
Basically, just to kind of give you a a overview of the project, the highest and best use of this project is for apartments. It's a small parcel. Um we've looked at it for several years to, you know, see what what we wanted to do with it and um we determined to process uh. The exemption for the affordable housing uh just because we want to do a um you know. A mix a mixed use housing development there, which is anything that's not uh. I guess you would say like high end housing like you would see kind of like the target with uh apartments with like garages and stuff like that, you know? All of that qualifies for low income, even if you're charging like fifteen hundred bucks a month for it, you know, it still has. The designation of that, so that's what we're shooting for is to do like uh family apartments for like, you know, uh. Forty percent to eighty percent A M I, it's like a mixed use apartment, so um it's not like really strictly low income like people think, none of the low income apartments really are. The only one we have that's like strictly low income is Callexico, it's a hundred percent thirty thirty percent A M I all across the board, but. Those apartment complexes, you know, the government doesn't typically want to pay for all of that, so. Most all of these units are going to end up being mixed use units was just basically like everybody unless you're making like, you know. Hundred hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year would kind of qualify to go into them, you know? So that's what we're shooting for, it's the highest and best use, uh it qualifies for the exemption. Um and we've pretty much met all the state guidelines for it, so we're just kind of going through the process.
Have some question.
Yeah, go for it.
First of all, I've seen you here before, you must have been on another project, right?
I'm I'm here quite a bit, all I do is land development in the city of Imperial and well in Imperial County, but uh. Uh I like I like to say Imperial is my home, so I you've probably seen me here quite a bit. I'm the one doing the apartments over there on the broochery right now.
Um. I'm familiar about where you're at when I saw where you're proposing, first of all. Um did you do a survey or anything with the people who have the single resident homes? Cause I did buy a couple homes there as rentals when that was first being developed with Southern Del Sol. And um I think the people who purchased the homes, whether they own them or rent them. Um had an expectation that they would be in a residential environment. Now you're bringing in um apartments. With sixty four units figuring at least three people per unit, that's about a hundred ninety two people coming in that concentrated area. How are you dealing with parking? Because the one over here at Wor- let me finish, run over here at Worthington and La Bushery. Although I see spaces for parking onsite. There's zigzag parking along the shoulder there at the intersection. So I don't know if those are people that are subleasing or whatever, because that's a low income project. It's all impacted, so what are you doing on this?
Uh I don't own or manage the units on Worthington, so I can't really.
No, I'm saying this, I'm talk- I'm making an observation, so that's what's prompting the question.
We're providing parking per city standards, that's what we're doing.
Okay elaborate please.
Uh Thon, you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, one of the things that they 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 um. On on the Worthington ones, they didn't have to meet all the parking requirements in this in this one, this case. They're meeting all the parking requirements are per per development standards.
Or how many, how many spots?
One per unit if you have a single fam- if you have a a one bedroom, one per unit.
So it's one per bedroom?
Uh one per unit, one bedroom and then it goes uh to one and a half on 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 two bedrooms and then two on three bedrooms.
So how do you have one and a half parking spots?
Uh we just do a calculation uh uh based on the uh the amount of units and then whatnot and then just run it up to the next number.
So therefore a two bedroom would have two spots.
Potentially have two spots.
They'd have two spots, okay. This is my rough calculation, I'm figuring sixty four units, three person a unit, that's a hundred ninety people. Probably a hundred fifty cars, how many spots do you have onsite?
This is just entitlements for land, there's not a de- design project yet, so it would it would be determined when we design the project and we go through the. Design uh and permitting with the city.
Well, uh my concern is I'm living there in the neighborhood and now I don't have place in front of my house to park. Because the people living in the apartment complex has taken the the public space.
I don't know what to say.
It really is not of your concern because you're just a developer that's been fighting around this valley, right?
No, I'm just a developer that develops for the subdivision map pack and sequel and follows the state guidelines.
Okay, let me ask you this, have you dealt with the agricultural impact this uh unit will cause?
The agricultural impact?
Right, you're right budding up to uh ag property.
All those ag properties are being developed right now into a single family residential by the by the um Victoria Homes and Legakis family.
Not a true statement.
Okay.
Not a true statement, I spoke with the landlord. His concern is that used to be produce ground. Because of all the development that has uh impacted his property, he no longer can grow produce on there. Let me finish sir, I have the floor.
Hold on, I'm gonna go, you guys go ahead and do what you want, I'm not gonna be attacked by the planning commission, you guys can go ahead and just vote without me.
Oh my goodness, you're such a weenie.
Let's um let's go ahead and um continue on. With um is there anybody here in the audience that has any comments regarding this specific project? That would like to come forward, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Lisa Legakis, I live at one ninety six West Dayton Road. So um I'm great with second graders, I teach second grade, so bear with me, I went ahead and wrote down what I want to say, so I'm just gonna go ahead and read it to you guys. And maybe it'll help a little bit with what he was referring to. So um good evening, my husband Chris and I received a letter in the mail just last week. So um good evening, my husband Chris and I received a letter in the mail just last week regarding the public hearing about single family residential being changed to residential apartments. It stated that the community development department could provide more information, but the address of the new project was not stated on the letter. The following day, my husband went to the city and was sent back and forth to two different departments and was even asked by a young man, why do you want this? Finally, he sent, he was actually sent a copy of the one page application and now knowing the exact location. For the sixty four units, we have several concerns. Those being the school mainly, that city right across the street from the proposed location, increased traffic on Cross Avenue. And parking, how will there be enough places and some of the things that you had already mentioned? Um back to my main concern would be the school, I think for me, I've been a teacher for thirty two years, I teach at a low income school. When Cross School opened, they were uh a little over four hundred students and they're actually at seven hundred and fifty now, so they're at capacity. I left my job early today to get to um Cross School, so I could try to speak to the principal, he was busy, but I was able to talk to two of the ladies that were in the office. And they had no idea about this project, the three people in the office that I talked to for um. I knew, okay, so I'm I'm sorry, let me back up, I left my job as a teacher early today to go over to Cross School and find out what they knew about this project. How they felt about having sixty four apartments across the street from their school and they knew nothing about it, they had no idea. The three people in the office, the one I was talking to um said that. You know, we're at capacity, I don't know how we would um have, you know. Wh- what's their plan, would we put more, you know, buildings, are they gonna help us expand our school? Would we bust the kids out, that would, you know, be an issue with the traffic that's already there on cross. And so um a few minutes later, I went home and we actually spoke to the Imperial Superintendent. And he knew nothing about this project, the superintendent of Imperial School District knew nothing about these apartments being built. I think passing this project without looking at those kinds of things, how many students will bring into the already overcrowded school? Is a developer going to help expand the school, the things I've already told you about? I do live near this area, we do have fields on the south and east side of this project. It has been in our family for approximately a hundred years and we currently do lease it out, so it is being farmed. I'm not sure um how this project is zipped from Sika will affect the farming of these fields. I would truly appreciate you not passing at this time, I do realize that we do need low income apartments in Imperial. I just don't feel like this is the right location for a project of this size, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak regarding this project, please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Don Eus, E U H U S. And uh my address is one ninety eight West Aitken Road. Although I live on the two and a half acres right next to this property. We are a quarter mile off of the highway uh where our post office box is, so our mailbox. So uh we actually owned this property and sold it to the Duggans, uh Roben Group. And uh our uh uh we understood at the time that it probably we'd be single family residential. Now, we have uh on that five, uh two and a half acres that we own. We have one large house that I shouldn't have built there. And I shouldn't have built that much house, but it's five thousand square feet of house and. So we will not be around to think about the results of any of this. Uh because we'll be leaving the valley and we're uh at that age, so. Uh I came because my problem is is that we are still countrified. And we are still on canal water. And the canal water, there's a ten foot easement across the entire south end of that corner parcel. For the ditch that goes through there for the water to both of our properties. And there are cisterns there and so on, and so we purify that water and use it in our home. So uh I had a problem with the fact that if we lost water to it, then it would make us a real problem. Because we could switch to city water, yes, but you don't. Uh take care of two and a half acres on city water, you can't afford to buy the water. So I had a problem with that and that's why I came. Now, I've already resolved that with uh uh Mister Roben. Uh they will run a pipe from this corner over to our three hundred feet to our acreage. So that we will be able to get water into our cisterns and take care of our property, so. I was a real estate broker here and I still am, but I was active for forty, fifty years. And own an insurance realis- or agency here as well, so I I am a local uh pretty much. Um I thought there would be more people here that would have concerns about this being in a residential area. Uh having multiple family dwellings there. And surprisingly, nobody's here except for this one family. So as far as I'm concerned, I've resolved my issues with it. And I'm not going to get into the politics of uh beyond what. I would have to deal with and I've dealt with that and we've come to an agreement. That they will put a pipe in for us if you do allow this to be to happen. Yes, it's a busy area and that's one question that I had for our planning commission the other day. Was about the traffic, the egress and ingress uh to that property since it's so close to the school. And uh it's it's a busy time over there, the people, it's just a zoo during the school hours as people come and go picking up children. And there's a lot of traffic there, and so you have to take that and can. I I'm going to tell you either way how I really feel about this. I thought it would be single family residences and I would like to see it that way, my property is built so that. As I sell it in the next six months to a year. There's room for two city lots on the north of my fenced property. So it makes my property, other than having too big a house, it makes it more sellable. To have those lots if it's a single family, but I just wanted to say that. I I live there, uh yes, I see the traffic. I see them trying to go down our back road beside our property. In the dirt, the dirt road and drop their kids off there instead of having to go through the uh traffic. And uh I can't let them use our spot, so they go on the other side of the ditch. And go up that ditch and then cross over the two ditches to get to the school district, so. So there are issues there. But I I I just wanted to say that uh either way, we probably won't be hurt. Too, but uh we resolved our issues if you do go along with this. But I understand the neighbors and the Legakis family. My feeling was and uh, you know, I can't put words in their mouths, but. Is that uh they're selling, they've sold most of the property to Victoria and so on. And that ultimately, that's all going to be developed there. It it won't be farming land after another five, ten years, but. It's your decision, so thank you for your.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address, please.
Chris Legakis, one ninety six West Aitken Road. I just wanna clarify something, uh yes, my father sold ground to Victoria Homes years ago. I am completing that sale for his request. The ground next to me and south of this project, there are no intention of selling that in my lifetime. We've had that ground for almost a hundred years, that means more to me than the dollar. So there are no plans to sell that ground, okay?
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding this project?
Okay. Um commission?
I do have a couple of comments that I'd like to make, um. One thing I that Mister Roben did make, I I thought he made a clear point too, is I think the low income sometimes gets a bad rap, low income is not. You know, low income, it's just under the area median income. So that doesn't mean it's gonna be, you know, people that, you know, uh to make a very low income, it's just under the median income for the area. And in Imperial is like eighty six thousand, so it'd be somewhere just just right about that or just under that. But I did do some research of, you know, today and kinda check things out, I think Mrs. Legakis made some really good points um about the school. I mean, that was one of my concerns is how is the school gonna handle that, where are they gonna put the kids? And I didn't s- see too much in here, so I'm not sure how much research has been done on the school part of it. The parking part, um also I went by tonight and there's like a program going on, so the parking's all the way up to Cross Road, and so I was kinda concerned about that. I've driven by um Worthington um road also and seeing that. I know that they probably met what was required at the time for the parking, but people are parking out on the street and I just think it doesn't look very nice. If I lived across the street from that, I probably wouldn't want it, I might have, you know, visitors come every once in a while and they'd have nowhere to park. Um so I would like to see a little bit more into the schools and the parking, maybe some sort of requirement that it's more than what the. Uh standard requirement is for parking. Um maybe they can paint the curb so that they can't park there, um. I've also seen people from Aitken Road trying to do the back road, so I don't know if we can talk to the I I D about. Doing something so they can't drive on that easement, I'm not sure what's there, but I just think that there needs to be maybe a little more research done on. On that area for the traffic and the school impact.
When the school is notified, this question's to staff, when the school is notified regarding this project, um. Who are the mailings sent to?
And to Imperial, like two and nine northeast street.
The local and actually at Cross, I'm not sure it got all the way down to them, but I mean, it went to where it. Should have gone and that's to the district, to the over body, over to the governing body.
Property owner, yes. And I personally um mailed out on December second. Ten days prior, more than the ten days that are required.
Probably had it. Bathroom. Out this week. I don't think.
Looked at.
Pass it down.
Impossible, that's my opinion, you know, ten days, you have the weekend also.
Put it out on the second? Okay, the first was a Friday, okay, the second was a Saturday. So therefore, there's already two days off from the ten days. Yeah, and then there's another two days that just happened this last weekend, so effectively it's only s- six days. At your fault, you're following the rules, but I think it's just the timing of the year. I personally think there's several factors here and I was not attacking that person, even though the tone of my voice. Can't come across as such, my concern is the people who bought the single family residence. That they have parking on the street that will be impacted by the sixty four unit residence. Even though there you say that there's one per one bedroom, one and a half for two, et cetera. I pass by Worthington all the time, Worthington, La Bushery, and it really upsets me, the jigsaw parking. When I see empty spaces covered in the cover within the fenced area of the of the facility. And so I'm thinking that these people who are parking there probably can't park inside and that's why they're parking on along the shoulder in a. Not in an organized manner, yeah, and that's my concern for this will happen. The second thing, uh I didn't think about the school, the impact, because I'm not into the educational sector. But then the third was the ag, because it's gonna impact, um, okay, why do I say it's gonna impact? Personal experience, we rent ground where there are some country homes that the owners rent out. One of the houses change of tenants. We've been farming the ground for the last fifteen years. New tenant comes in, doesn't like tractors early in the morning. The lights bother them, they're sleeping, don't like the noise from it, don't like workers walking around that are irrigating a laying pipe. We get calls, they call into the ag commissioner. When you buy a house here in the Puro Valley, if you get to buy a house. One of the things that you are made aware of is that you're in an agricultural community. That's one of the things that are brought to your attention through the escrow process. If you're a tenant, you're paying rent, you don't know that, okay? So therefore, when the tractors are gonna go by, people are gonna complain, making noise. There's alfalfa growing there, right, Chris, on the field? What what's your tenant growing? Sudan grass? Probably climb, okay, climb, okay, that's going dormant in the winter time, just like Bermuda. But then it starts up in in March when they put some uh urea on it. The point being is, he's not gonna sell it. But that's all he can grow, because at one time there was produce grown on that ground, okay? But you can't grow produce when you're right by houses and schools because of the state regulations. They can't crop dust, they can't operate at night, there's certain restrictions, especially with school in session. So that limits your ability to whom you can rent to. It decreases the value of your property because of the impact that your dad sold the property, you're following through on the agreement. But your intention is not to sell any more ground, what what had, what has happened is water under the bridge, the issue is now to bring in more people. Who are tenants, who are not aware that agriculture exists there. And that there are certain things that occur that people who are not familiar with the ag activity. Get irritated about and start calling the city, call the county to complain, alright? Well, you'll say, well, that you'll have to educate them, okay, that's good and well till the next tenant moves in. Those are my three concerns about this project, the final one was Mister Roben's. Um reaction, okay? I guess he's used to um not having someone being so pointed. And that's based on his youth, I think, that's all I have to say. I would ask if this ends up getting passed for them to put a block fence up. At least that will create some barrier between the agriculture and this project. To diminish the noise and also the trash that might fly into the field. Because we experience it all the time, that agriculture is viewed as a dumping ground, used tires, mattresses. Even the neighbors from the small towns, their trash flies into our fields, okay? So maybe a eight foot, nine foot block wall all around the structure. Might be a requirement that I would advocate, thank you.
I have a q- uh question, Commissioner Abadi, just because I'm not very um knowledgeable on the ag side of it. So right now it is at an R one zoning. Uh huh, uh single family residential, with that zoning. And if those houses uh were to come on as they are approved now. How does that impact the agriculture around it? Does it not, is it the fact that there's gonna be multi-family, is that where um? You know, where you say with uh the problems with it, I don't know, is it with the pesticides, I don't know, I don't know how it works, so.
With residential and because the school's right there, you only can apply material during certain hours and certain days. School, it cannot be while school's in session, okay? And now with short days, there's no time to apply, so you wait till the weekend. Okay, and you hopefully if there's that pest infestation, you it doesn't impact your crop by waiting four or five days. And then you have to deal with the wind, okay? Because depending which way the wind's blowing, that's a consideration, whether or not you can apply material, I'm just talking about material being applied.
Cause you do have bugs and fungicides. That have to get herbicides that gotta get applied to whether a crop you're growing, right? So those are impacts which. Mr. Legacki's tenant has to consider when he's negotiating the rent. Of how much he can't afford to pay because he's losing with respect to the location. It's all a cost benefit analysis.
Definitely, and do those conditions change whether it's an R-one to uh multifamily?
I think it does change because you have more people in a smaller area, okay?
Okay, so what's like the pesticides and fungicides, all that does change? If there's multifamily versus a single family there.
I don't think they're increasing the application rate. What I'm thinking is the impact, you have more people that can be impacted. Concentration, just like if you have a bus full of people and it it and a help and a help and an airplane. Air applicator flies over, okay, and it might have a trail of that it just finished flying and it has a a drift. There's a lot more people concentrated in that bus that can get impacted versus just one vehicle flying over. Okay, and that's a concern in the evaluation, whether or not you can apply, and if you, even if the ag commissioner will let you. Cause you've gotta submit your recs to the ag comp.
One, one thing, uh Commissioner Abadi, that staff did mention was that those. That multifamily um establishment off of um Worthington didn't have to come. Go with all the the parking standards or did I?
There was a parking reduction on that, because it was affordable housing. In this case, he's not looking for that, so it's pretty, it's. Um he needs to comply with our development standards, no matter what.
Okay, so there was a reduction, so.
Reduction in parking, yes.
So it's, would you say, I'm just wondering if it's comparing apples to oranges, because the standards were not the same, wouldn't be the same.
In parking, no, it wouldn't be the same. This one will have higher parking than the ones of Worthington.
At uh set in stone?
That one, this one here?
Yes.
Um it it's uh.
Or could it change?
It could change, I I.
Because it's all negotiable, right?
Can you walk us through the entitlement process? Cause what we have in front of us right now is just the zone change, right?
It is a zone.
But it does have conditions, so what are the next steps and does this planning commission? Or the council get involved, and at what point would the community be able to talk about the park? I I think they want some.
I think you have some options uh on the table. You can continue the item, trying to get more information from the school and whatnot. Uh you can recommend or not recommend and leave it up to the city council to make a final decision.
But but then when we do, once the zone change is done, is this an over the counter permit?
That is, that is correct. Once it's completed, then it's an over the counter permit.
Which means it doesn't come back to this.
It doesn't come back to the planning commission, but it will be reviewed under our development standards.
But then if they add conditions or requirements or comments in at this point today. Their recommendation, because it's a zone change, would have to go to the council no matter what.
That is correct.
Um but those could be added at this point and set in stone, essentially, uh using your language, right?
Okay, so so may I? Okay, so I can understand, so I'm gonna talk out out as I'm thinking. If we were to condition that the parking cannot change, because until the permit is issued. Things can change, correct? Negotiate, okay? Everything's negotiable until the agreement is signed. And that's the permit, right? Is that what is the title for it, the contract? Yeah, that's the contract, okay, so my concern is parking, having a barrier. Okay, um and that the part, okay. There has to be some respect for the single-family residents where their parking, even though it's deemed to be public. And anybody could come and park in front of there, someone could come and park in RV and live on it, okay? Right, and then find a place to go dump their dump, right? So it's because it's public. But I think there was an expectation by the single-family residents when they bought their homes. That that's what they were buying, single-family residents, and that was the community, the environment. And now it's being turned upside down with this development that's being proposed. So I would like to know, gosh, like that other gentleman said, he's surprised. That there's not more people here, okay? Maybe because most people don't read the Colexical Chronicle that live here. Right, and there might be reflective also, I've been here for two years. That's always sparse in attendance, that people don't go on the website. To see what the agenda is and what's going on in their community. They just go to work, take care of their kids or whatever and come home. You know, I I dropped off my dog before I got here, I'm sorry, that's why I'm late, and I wanted to stay there.
I think all the, the landowners three hundred uh feet and around, they get a personal mailing, right? So they do get personally contacted for.
Letter.
And it's it's a sad thing, but it's it can't, that's not, like the city can't control that, you know, that's, that's.
Maybe three hundred feet from the side is gonna be what? Maybe there's two houses on Fonzie or what's three hundred feet?
Uh how many people did you notify? How many houses? Eighteen houses?
Eighteen property.
Eighteen properties? And that was sent also on December first? Okay.
So I I gather this green line is the uh area within which owners receive mailed notice. And is it, is it three, is it measured three hundred feet from all of the exterior boundaries of the subject property?
Okay, so at at this point in the process, we can't. There's not gonna be any conditions provided for parking or anything like that. This is just with the land use that we're dealing with.
It's a land use, but you could also.
At this point, we can.
We we've included, there's conditions such as fire access, so you are welcome to add.
Okay.
Yes, you have, this is your.
Still runs through the city council, but yes, add.
I think the the one condition that I do wanna address is um number twenty. Which is the impacts from the projects will be evaluated by the Ca- Imperial County Fire Department. Um is this where that fire truck comes into play?
It's uh could be any many things, a fire truck, equipment and whatnot, so it's 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 like a blank check. It's a capital purchases.
Okay, and it says. Shall be addressed, so that doesn't mean, that means that it would be just some sort of. Internal meetings between the city and the or the applicant, the city and the developer, it doesn't necessarily say that they are required to. Purchase a fire truck.
Not not specifically your fire truck, but it say it could potentially be a fire truck or any sort of equipment that they u- utilize.
And at that time, if the, you know, the fire department wanted a fire truck. And the applicant says, no, what's the next step? Like, how do, how is that, is that negotiated just in-house? Does that come back here or? How was that determined?
If if approved, they ha- if approved by recommended by the planning commission and approved by the city council, uh they they have to. They have to purchase, uh if it's a fire fire truck, they will have to purchase a fire truck.
With leaving number twenty as is.
Uh with leaving number twenty as is.
But nothing states that they have to keep that equipment, fire truck, whatever happens to be. In Imperial, they can move it wherever they need it throughout the county.
It's gonna be a county.
Doesn't say.
And 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 we we've come to this in the past with the same developer, and and that's the concern that this developer again has put in application. And again, we have, uh, you know, we're we're the the county's putting in a a fire truck in there. Or up to a fire truck, not per se exactly a fire truck, um, again. It's their equipment, you you know, there's the ones that. Send it wherever they need it, I understand that, um but I think uh for me, that was that was the that was the first concern.
I I'd like to remove anything that would. Instill the applicant to have to purchase a fire truck, because of um as discussed, they're already paying fire impact fees. So would that be removing twenty altogether? Or? Council, would that be removing, how would that work?
Number twenty.
Right, I'm looking at twenty though, and the updated twenty, was it changed? The one that was handed out? This was just handed out right before and it. This twenty, I'm not seeing the requirement.
It is, it is the same.
About the fire truck was in the um.
It's not in twenty.
No, it's not in twenty, it was in uh the background discussion analysis.
Correct, yes, to include up to, so capital purchases could be, yeah, fire.
Right, so I.
Sort of sort of equipment.
I apologize, I'm causing the, yeah, so I'm I'm causing the confusion. So when I look at the actual language of twenty. The way that it's written now, and these are the conditions separate and apart from the staff. Report does matter, but when we actually look at the conditions and they conflict, we go with the staff or the conditions. So it currently says that the impacts will be evaluated and discussed, and there's no requirement um specifically. It just says whatever those happen to be, so it does leave it up to future. Um but it doesn't specifically require a fire truck in any way in the condition, so I I think that in it. We can edit the current twenty how it is, but there's no requirement to buy a fire truck.
But if, and that was my question to Althon is, what if they come with that, and then the applicant says, no, how is that? How is that dis- how is that, you know, reconciled?
So the the general requirements under the state law and our local laws is that we went out and did a study years ago. We're updating that study now, it changes over time, but there is a minimum requirement for everyone who purchases. And there's a list, if you do a single-family home, you're gonna pay this much if you do, let's say it's, you know, a thousand dollars for that. Let's say you build an apartment, it's two thousand, you know, or a thousand dollars for that. When they come in and they build, let's say they pull a permit for sixty, it'd be sixty times that number.
Refer to the impact fee.
The impact fee, so that is the minimum of what they're required to do. Um if they're coming in and doing something extremely strange and there's no way to get to that location. They're gonna either have to change the location or provide the apparatus to be able to get there, so they will look site-specific. Um to possibly say we can't access it or to add additional conditions, but for the most part, it's based on the impact fee study. Um and it's resolved that that is the bare minimum, and then if there is proof of additional impacts that they can't. We can't deal with as a department, then those might be, you have to change your construction or you have to change the equipment that we own. Does that make sense?
It does, but I'm still don't feel like I'm getting like, what if, my assumption is if, because county fire came before and said, we want, we want a fire truck. And the with, I believe with this applicant, this applicant says no, how does that get it reconciled? Who's the, who's the decision-making body on this?
Dennis Marida, um Oton, and then it goes to our city council.
Okay.
And then ultimately, if we made a requirement, let's say we asked a developer to give us a million-dollar fire truck and we had good reason for it. They ultimately could go to the superior court and argue with us, right? So we have to justify what we're doing, um county fire is our fire department that we control, pay and work through with a contract. If there's a dispute about what we think, we can put the condition on them and they can sue us, but typically, my experience with working with. The departments and the council has been every time that somebody disagrees with the impacts or has an argument, it's been worked out at a staff level. Including the last fire truck, which was dealt with at this planning commission and before it even went to city council.
Okay, so leaving twenty, number twenty in will not cause the applicant to. Have their hands tied behind their back and have to provide what county fire?
Yeah, and I think we could put in the minutes that it's clear that your, the the disagreement with the staff report, but that the language in twenty is very generic. And would be an individual analysis, likely the impacts determined in the study, okay?
I recall seeing in the staff report reference to the fire truck.
I did too, that's fine.
And I also saw a reference that the developer disagrees. So whatever the condition says, which is written in a much more vague and broad way. What was, what was communicated to the developer was fire truck. I mean, if we're just gonna get down to the reality of the situation, and as the city attorney indicated, to the extent that condition is imposed. As a condition of approval, and keep in mind, what you're doing is making a recommendation to the council. Uh to the extent that condition is ultimately oppose, uh uh imposed. Uh as the city attorney indicates, it could be challenged. What the court is gonna consider in assessing that challenge is whether the impact of the development. There's a nexus between the impact of the development and the condition. So they they would say, so the court would say, well, does this particular project require a fire truck? Is there a link between the impacts of this development and a fire truck? The ne- the next question would be what's referred to as proportionality. That is, is is it fair, basically, to impose, let's say a fire truck is a million dollars. A million-dollar condition on a sixty-four unit apartment complex. So we could take an example, let let's say uh uh Mr. Lewis is gonna build a a single-family dwelling. And and the city or the county were to say, well, we would like you to widen Dogwood Road f- to four lanes in between Worthington. And the El Centro city limits, right? That's gonna be millions of dollars, and I think most people would agree, that's kinda out of proportion, right? Do you're you're gonna build one house and to say you've gotta build Interstate eight i- is is probably not proportional. That same sort of analysis would be done if we say you have to provide a fi- a fire truck. Cause we know going in, we, the developer that has already been discussed, you can see from the staff report. That 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 the fire department has brought that up, the developer, at least at this stage, is saying, whoa, a million-dollar. Uh a fire truck is kinda out of whack to a sixty-four unit uh apartment com- complex. Uh so I I that that's kind of the process that would be involved. Uh I think the city could say you're gonna do it or we're not gonna approve it. And then there there's where the rubber meets the road in terms of what the developer decides to do about that.
Okay.
That that's that's what, the way I saw it the last time, a- and I was surprised to see it again this time, a- and and just being consistent, uh again. Exactly the way you explained it, the comparison, it it just seemed too much for for what his intention was. And and that's why it, that's what was blaring uh at me uh when I first read. What we were talking about this evening, so that that was a concern for me.
Althon, is there a reason that it's in the staff report but not in the conditions, by any chance? I I can we? No, oh, okay, I just, alright.
I understood it as a fire truck, but uh Oton just pointed out before the meeting that it states capital purchase.
Yeah, yeah, no, and and I'm not, I think maybe just based on the concerns here, if the concerns are. Um you you want the direct proportionality and you actually want to not just blatantly require a fire truck. I'm surprised that that's, you know.
And it's just, yeah, wanna make sure that capital purchase also could also mean a a fire truck, so we wanna make sure that, yeah.
Yeah, it could be.
A- any type of equipment, but including a fire truck, and that's all conversations that we had with the fire department before on all the projects, so we wanna make sure that. It could potential be that much of an impact for our developer.
Anything else, Commissioner?
On uh, that's for the parking, um I I I kinda understand uh. Uh the Robin Group's uh position on this, I mean, they're meeting the the requirements, I think we learned our lesson from from this last project. Uh we're a little more astute to those details. Um and one and a half parking, I think the one and a half parking is considering that one. One resident would be ho- home during the day and one would be during an off hours, so something like that. Uh but I I think we would take that into consideration in this regard. Uh but still, I still see a lot of um. I mean, realistically, you're still gonna have overflow and and you're still gonna have cars encroaching into this field on the south. End of that development. Regardless, weekends, parties, whatever happens to be, you're going to have traffic, you're going to have vehicles that park into those fields. You're going to have picnics out there, you're gonna have parents walking their kids out into those fields, that's just nature. Uh and that's that's not a hit on whether you're low income, you're middle income, or you're high income. We are animals that just move across the land to to some degree. We we want to get out, we wanna reach out, especially at this time of the year. You're going to have encroachment into those fields. Doesn't matter. How you work that out. Um you see, I've seen that in in the past before Cross Elementary during the the Freedom Fest. Those fields were covered with people, and that's just one event. Imagine housing people there in that area. Again, um I I'm strong proponent, supporter of of Ag and the teachers. The the school district hasn't even responded from it. Uh that's not a hit on our staff. I know you you you've done, you did what you we needed to. It's just timing. Uh you know, the those entities are, they there's gonna be a delay, they're not gonna catch on to it until next year or until. They have an a traffic problem that's out of control. Um again, uh have we considered? The student, the pupil numbers. There's still a lot of statistics and numbers um that have not been considered. Um again, I'm not putting that on on the Roben Group. The Roben Group is out there to do one thing and that's develop property, that's bring housing. That is not a hit on them. They're doing what they do. But I think on this end, uh if we're going to do due diligence, I I I, for me, it's something I think we need to continue. Uh extend it out a couple of weeks and offer out. You know, if I gotta go down to to, you know, I know it's not in in, I don't think it's in my wheelhouse, but. If I if I need to go down there and 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 talk directly, ask the the school just, you have no input on this. Uh you know what I mean, but I it it just really is something that if we leave as is and we move forward in developing. Sure, not an issue, but it the. It will come back at us. We will end up. In those things. On the school end, on the parking end, the traffic po- portion of it, it's going to come back at us. I I really think we need to. Table this uh another another two week now, and I guess three, four weeks now. I don't think we're ready to to move on. That's just, that's what I'm looking at this point.
Certainly, a continuance of the public hearing is an option that you have. I would suggest that you pick a specific date. Uh because in in continuing to a specific date and time. Uh we we would not require, be required to send another notice. But certainly as a practical matter, we could reach out to uh uh the school in particular. To make sure that uh uh that that they, that they open their mail and 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 look at notices of this sort.
Okay. Yes. For them to um read their mail and to be here, okay? How many students they have?
But.
I'll also say, I, some insight from the school would be helpful because the state law and the California Education Code. Is very clear about the tie between a development and the population at the school and the fees that can be charged, so. We're a little bit in between and controlled by state law about. How how we are involved in additions in our community and how that impacts the school, right? Although it's told you can charge a dollar ninety-three per square foot, you know, or per per unit, there is some very strict rules, so it would be helpful to hear from them. Uh because our hands are somewhat tied related to school capacity, cause that's a school decision ultimately, you know.
So, huh um are you good with that, Commissioner Winkler, as far as uh continuing it until we get some more feedback from the school?
Yes, I was just trying to look at a date to make sure that we don't do it too soon.
No, I'm thinking like January tenth.
Yeah. Would that be, do we meet the second?
The set, we'd meet the second and fourth Wednesday.
Cause they won't go back to school. I don't believe they're out right now, but they don't go back until the second.
Yes, they're back the second. January tenth. So school will be out on the twenty seventh, so that's why I'm saying January tenth.
Why am I saying that? Because. If the school's coming back on the second, they're just waking up. They won't warm up until the week of the eighth. That's a fact. I deal with, I have people working for me, Monday and Fridays.
Now, does that, does that change any windows for for the developer in meeting the sequoia? Yeah, I I don't, I don't want to 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 cut him off it.
No, it's a continuance, I mean, he, uh we'll we'll make sure he is is at this meeting. Can we get an idea from staff like what'll be done between now and the twenty seventh? Well, at least we're gonna reach out to to the uh uh to the school, trying to get feedback and, you know, try to get him here as well. Okay, so there will be no other notice notifications, put in any other reading material or? No other notice are required by law, but I will reach out to those peoples that have, that are here present and in addition to the school. And how do we choose Clecsico Chronicle and Holville Tribune instead of the Imperial Valley Press?
I can.
Okay.
About ten times the the money and then also the readership, it's free when you are on the online with Clecsico and Holville. So there's a minimum standard, they meet the minimum standards by far in terms of readership. And then it's just a um, it's a very different process and a much more expensive one under Ivy Press.
I don't think a lot of people in Imperial are reading those too. Okay, that's just reality, even though. Where was it said that? You met, they met the minimum, they met the minimum, and now we're reaping the fruit of it. I E. The Worthington, they met the minimum, okay, and now we get the fruit of it. The same thing with this, these people likely don't read the Clecsico Chronicle or the Holville Tribune. There isn't there one like the Desert Review or something that comes out free sitting at the post office? I pick it up when I go to the Sealy Post Office. That's free right there. We, who puts that out?
Desert Review is processed in Brawley but given out all over.
Okay, that's a freebie. Couldn't we advertise in there?
They charge for advertising, but if the newspaper's free, just like Clecsico and well, yeah.
I I believe.
They put them in restaurants, they put them in doctors' offices.
I I think there would be some uh costs associated with that, but as a general proposition, I would suggest to you that. More notice is always better than less notice.
I would like to see more people here, okay? You know, this is their community.
In in between now and the date you continue, I would just uh al- also uh uh. This, the thing that struck me about the the staff report. As a fan, and the city attorney alluded to the fact that state law. Uh and depending where you are on on the political spectrum, you might have a different opinion on. On the state kind of intruding on local control. But a- as you can see, because of their desire to expand the availability of affordable housing. They've made certain kinds of projects exempt from sequoia. That that's significant because if it's exempt from sequoia, that means. That the California Environmental Quality Act is no longer a vehicle by which mitigation measures can be imposed. So you have that aspect. The other aspect is, I think on development generally. And as the city attorney alluded to, state law has spoken very clearly. To what developers can be made to do to mitigate school impacts. And I would say as a general proposition, state law is saying, city, you can do very little. Other than development impact fees to mitigate school impacts. So if the school comes and says. We are at capacity, so if you build sixty-four apartments across the street from Cross Elementary, all of those kids are gonna have to go somewhere else. Uh and so if the city were to say in response to that, developer build another school. I I would submit to you, that would potentially violate state law. And and. Like it or not, that I, that that I believe is where we stand with respect to the state of the law and trying to address school impacts.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, if I, if I may, I I wanna add something as well, um so it's an, it's a. The existing is an R one. Um so yes, just to keep in mind and maybe some of the questions that we may have uh for the, for the school district is. Uh um permitted by right, you can potentially build seventeen homes. Up to thirty-four, uh if you push it with a P U D. Um and then. You know, like uh city manager mentioned, state law came in place with S V nine. In addition to uh permitted use, you can also build a junior A D U. And an A D U in the back, so traffic will increase, uh either or, uh just something to keep in mind.
Remember that, that workshop we did where they showed how people can build those extra homes in the back? So even with the single family, it's still a possibility.
Correct, just to keep in mind.
Thank you.
And are we gonna uh go into the desert review? Can we just spend the money so we can let people know? It's, they put it in lots of free places. Yeah, I don't know how much it costs. Yeah. So put that out. Thank you. Oh, uh that was what I was gonna ask. Is there gonna be any type of public function between now and the twenty seventh? You know, we've already passed the. Christmas parade, the little town, is there a a farmer's market? Because I'm trying to put out information. Is there something happening in January? Is there a farmer's market?
Oh, I I believe the next event is until later in the spring.
Okay, okay, so there's not a gathering. Alright, thank you.
So for um, without all being said, the recommended action would be a continuance to January.
Yeah, if we could do a motion, if somebody can motion that and you vote on it, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make a motion that we do a continuance. For the general plan amendment and zone change twenty-one oh two for Fonzie Apartments.
Yeah, just to January.
January twenty-seventh.
At six thirty.
At six thirty.
And and to the extent you want additional notice. Uh my suggestion would be to make that part of your motion and to provide additional notice by way of desert review.
Okay, so I'd like to add to that motion that we.
January twenty-fourth.
Oh goodness.
Was it the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I'll start again. I wanna make a motion that we do a continuance for the. Item general plan amendment and zone change twenty-one oh two for the Fonzie Apartments to January twenty-fourth. On the planning commission meeting at six thirty. And that additional notice is made at the desert review and that direct contact is made with uh Cross School.
I second that.
Go call please.
Commissioner Winkler?
Yes.
No, I'm not even on here. There I am, but I don't have a a yes or no.
He's doing it.
Commissioner, our vice chairperson Rivera.
Yes.
And chairperson Harvey.
Yes. Okay. Um now that we've completed that, we'll move on to reports. D one commissioners reports, we'll go ahead and start with um Commissioner Winkler.
And I just wanted to say, I've enjoyed all the Imperial activities the last few weeks, um. And um everybody here is invited to the chamber tonight, if you wanna do that, in El Centro Imperial Valley Regional Chamber, cause Imperial is a. Is part of that chamber. We're having our Chris- Christmas festivities now. At the Chi- Imperial Valley Regional Chamber on the corner of. Well, if you go to, if you go to Ross and Fourth, you'll probably see.
Oh, there by Garcia Market.
Yes.
Commissioner Rivera?
There's nothing really, the the numbers show, the the numbers showed in the feedback of. The response, everybody at the uh. At the uh. Christmas is in a small town this Saturday. Uh the numbers to churn out for the uh parade. It speaks for itself, uh Imperial continues to to. To lead the way in. Things uh for the community that involve the community. Um other than that, no, uh it's it's end of the year, I've I. I I think we've had enough dialogue for for the evening. Um the last meeting, I forgot to say happy Thanksgiving, so I'd I'd be damned if I forget this evening. Merry Christmas to everybody, to the staff for all your hard work, uh to the other commissioners, to anybody that's still. Listening to us, uh Merry Christmas to you all, uh best wishes and Happy New Year in the uh coming, in the uh coming year.
Commissioner Abadi.
Ask a question. December twenty-seventh, two days after Christmas, are we meeting? That's the next meeting on the agenda. Are we gonna address that point, like to say we're gonna cancel or whatever? Do we take that um initiative or is that done by staff who have noticed that it's being canceled?
I recall the the Brown ad, you you have established by ordinance your regular meetings. If there isn't an agenda published and a quorum doesn't appear for a meeting, then. Unless you post something to the contrary, the law says that it rolls over to the next regular meeting, so.
They don't have any items for that.
I think ta- staff would would typically post. Uh a notice that there there will not be a meeting on the on the twenty-seventh, so something will go up on the website, so.
Okay, uh as far as the Christmas parade, yes, it, I I've spoke with a few people who were in it. And they said it was really long and it was cold, but they had a good time. It was great, uh variety of representation. Um there was just a curious question that I have. How is it determined, uh is it first come, first served as far as lining up the entrance? Because it was like over seventy uh entrance. How does, how how is it figured out? Who's like in charge of that?
Yes, uh so our uh our parks and recreation department. Uh basically is in charge of accepting entrance. Um I'm not sure how scientific it gets in terms of assigning order. I think they basically try to. Uh spread out bands and things like that, and I I and and what I noticed also is that. The the sheriff's entries were pretty well grouped together. So I'm not sure, I I don't think there's a real science associated with it.
Here's a suggestion, and I don't know if you can direct me to who I could make this suggestion. Suggestion is to put the little kids that are scantily clad towards the front. Okay? Um a few mamas made comments to me that they walked a mile and a half because they were up at the post office. Waiting for their kids and they became worried because their kids were way at the end, okay? And the kids were majorettes in clothes and like that. So maybe, if you could tell me who to talk to, I'd just make a suggestion, put the kids in the front and put the tractors, the John Deere tractors. Behind them.
I can, I can pass that along to.
And I thought it was maybe just based on, oh, they got their app paperwork in late, so that's why they were at the end. But um that's just a suggestion. That was a concern by some mamas. It was a long time. And it's in December and it was cold. And I said, well, next time, um don't enter your kid.
But we just said they had fun, so I mean.
Yeah, so that's, that is all I have to say.
Uh for myself, I just want to, this being the last meeting, thanks staff for all the hard work and um for everyone to. I'm wishing everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and that's all that I have. Staff reports.
I would just say happy holiday.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-eight P M.